Boards and Commission, Madam Clerk, can you read the roll?
Yes, Mr. Schmidt, Mr. Hart, Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Jones. I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We have two boards and commission appointments. John Blitch for Civil Service Commission, it's a reappointment, and Tanisha Dykman for a Human Rights Commission, expiration date 6/16/2017 for a new appointment. I'd like to make a motion that we approve those recommendations.
And I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion been made to adjourn and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned.
So, Mr. Welper?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Most approved agenda and also the approval of the minutes of June 9, 2014.
Second?
We have a motion and a second, is there a discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, those items pass.
Madam Chair, I'll take the travel request.
Thank you, sir.
Officer Herkelman, Defensive Tactics for Instructor Recertification at Johnston, Iowa, on August 20, 2014, for a hundred and six, amount not to exceed $165.
Second? We have a motion and a second, discussion?
None.
All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that item passes.
I'd like to take the preauthorization, if that would be possible. And the first one is the airport, the amount of $1,200 for repair and place, repair and replacement of slats on the passenger-loading bridge. Cultural and arts, in the amount of $5,985 for canvas banners for Expo Plaza. Streets Department, not to exceed $3,500 for computers, tablets, to track daily workflow on street projects. And leisure services, in the amount of $2,340 for pointer insecticide. Pointer insecticide, okay. Police, in the amount of $1,439.20 plus $15 shipping and handling, for 40 individual patrol emergency trauma kits. Sanitation, in the amount of $31,264.20 for rebuilt motor, ISL 345 truck, 150903. And Waste Management Services, in the amount of $6,490 for 12-month of support maintenance renewal, renewal for two PipeTech Scan 6X licenses and one PipeTech View 6X license and one Seat Network license for PipeTech View 6X office software.
I'll second those.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion, questions, issues? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, those items pass. I move that we pay the bills this week, which are $2,600,328.20, 2,600,328.02.
Second?
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Motion for adjournment.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you, sir.
We can work together on this.
Greetings, everyone. Good Monday afternoon to you. Turn my microphone on so you can hear me. And before we get started with anything, I am going to make an announcement because it does pertain to the speech up here. I'm hearing a lot of comments, rightfully so, regarding it being hard to hear for you folks out in the audience, and that the television recording is particularly bad. And I just want to make the announcements that, as the chambers have been redone, we do not, the microphones are not new. These are our old microphones and our old wiring for the system. That will be updated and upgraded, it's not yet, so you, my apologies, we've been working on it all week, but what we've got right now is the best we can get until we get the rest of the system completed. So for those of you watching on television also, if it's staticky or if it's hard to hear, my apologies evidently, the live broadcast is worse than the recordings. The live broadcast has a lot of static on it, the recordings are not so bad, so if everybody will kindly bear with us and hopefully indulge us until we can get all of everything up and running, that would be just fabulous. Madam Clerk, would you read the roll, please?
Yes, Ms. Cole?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Lynn?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mr. Welper?
Here.
Mr. Hart?
Here.
Thank you.
Very good, if you'd all join me, please, in standing for just a moment of silent reflection or prayer. Thank you very much. Dennis, please, our pledge tonight is going to be led by Mr. Dennis Clark, our general manager of the Waterloo Water Works, Dennis, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, you may be seated.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Hart?
I would like to make a motion to approve an amended agenda, and the First Amendment is adding a 1B8 to the consent agenda for a license for flirts. The second item would be on during the regular council meeting, item number seven should read "No objections" instead of "Objections." Also, I'd like to add a public hearing that had previously been scheduled, 8.8.5, for reallocation of unspent bond proceeds from 2008, and I would like to amend number 14 to reflect bonds, the bond series type, which would just add the word taxable. Also with the approval of the amended agenda, I also move that we approve the minutes of June 9th, regular session, June 4th, special session, and June 5th, special session, as proposed.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Hart. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding the agenda of the minutes?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Wel, uh, Mr. Morrissey, sorry.
In relation to 1B, on the consent agenda, 1B8, is, is there anybody that could speak to that?
You're to find it here, Mr. Morrissey, 1B8.
It's flirts, it's regarding flirts.
Okay.
Depends what the question is.
What, yeah, what is the question?
The question is regarding, how come that's a new license?
Okay.
If there's some history on that.
Madam Clerk, who?
With some follow-up questions.
Do you have the answer to that, or is that a Noel que, please?
The, typically, we timely file liquor license renewals when they come into our office, but we were unable to do that this time. The state denied their application because there was a wrong date on their insurance. They have since resubmitted the insurance, but that requires them to put it as a new license rather than a renewal. It's a state requirement.
So it would have been, it would have been a clerical mistake on their part that they did not have the correct information on the license that they did file, which meant that they didn't meet the deadline?
Correct. I don't know if it was clerical or that they didn't actually purchase the insurance seamlessly, but for some reason, the end of one insurance policy and the beginning of the other insurance policy left a gap, which didn't meet the requirements of the state, therefore their license couldn't be timely filed, and now they have to apply for a new one, so they currently do not have a license until this is passed.
And Suzie or Noel, aren't there prohibitions, don't they have to meet a 600-foot setback with a new license request?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director, they are still within the 90 days that's required by the ordinance, so they're still essentially grandfathered in at that location.
Even with the new language?
Correct.
So if we voted to deny this, what happens?
I'd imagine they would take some type of recourse with us because they'd be in, they're in conformance with the zoning regulations.
And has, has there been precedent for that in the past?
Yes.
I'll, Mr. Morrissey, I would surmise, I don't want to put words in Flirt's mouth, but if the majority of the council were to vote to deny this license, they would appeal it, and at what time, during the time that the appeal would run, they would be granted their license to be able to do business during the appeal time, and they would most likely win their appeal. We have quite a bit of history in this in the past in denying licenses for various reasons and have not had a good track record at prevailing in those hearings. So we would probably have to have really good reason to deny this, and I don't think that we have that in this case. Certainly your purvey, it's your vote, you can vote your conscience, but...
Well, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
One of my concerns, not just by this and with the 600-foot and all that, and I know what Noel said, because that came up with payday lenders and that, but, is that with the new sportsplex there, we've got a daycare, I know it's a sort of a temporary and it's a on-the-spot daycare, that's going to have a playground right across from Flirt's.
Yes, sir.
And I find that quite objectionable to have kids' daycare right across from Flirt's gentleman's club. So that's my objection to there being a liquor license there, matter of fact, there even being there, quite frankly.
I, I think that, again, I'm not, I'm bordering on putting words in their mouth, but I think you, they would, might respond that it was our choice to put the sportsplex there, they've been there for a long time. And us to deny the license on that basis would, I think, very quickly be overturned by the, by the Alcohol Beverage Board. I think a better approach for us is that the business is for sale, is for us to try to help us find a new owner there, or to get involved in trying to purchase ourselves or some other avenue rather than trying to deny their license.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. Again, having said all of that, these are your votes, vote your conscience. Now with all that conversation, I've completely lost where we are.
We need to approve the...
Okay, I asked for comments on the agenda or the minutes, and I have some, are there any further comments on the agenda or the minutes? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye, or no.
I'm sorry?
No.
Okay, we...
I mean, yes on everything except for 1B8.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Morrissey, so noted. With that passing, we do have a proclamation tonight, and I see we have Latanya Graves in our audience, Latanya, and if you'd like to come up, if you have someone with you, please feel free to bring one up, if not, just come on up. This is the new way to get up here. Very good.
Hi there.
Hi there, Latanya, we have Latanya Graves with us tonight. Latanya is here to accept a proclamation recognizing the Juneteenth celebration. City of Waterloo, Iowa proclamation, whereas on June 19, 1865, Union soldiers led by Major General Gordon Granger landed at Galveston, Texas to enforce President Lincoln's emancipation proclamation and declare freedom for all slaves. And whereas each year thereafter, former Texas slaves and their descendants joined in a celebration of freedom and the commemoration became known as Juneteenth. And whereas across our nation, Americans celebrate Juneteenth, a day to reflect on the sufferings of slavery and to remember the joyful Declaration of Freedom. It is a time of rejoicing with family and friends and a time for planning the future. And whereas this celebration gives us the opportunity to commemorate African-American heritage, as we honor the courage and fortitude of our ancestors, we renew our commitment to combat injustice with triumphant spirit of freedom. Now therefore, I Buck Clark, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, Iowa, do hereby proclaim June 19, 2014, as Juneteenth celebration. In the city of Waterloo, and acknowledge the many contributions African-Americans have made to our great nation. Today is an opportunity, excuse me, to recommit ourselves to confronting injustice wherever we find it and upholding the dignity of all people. By doing so, we protect the freedom and democratic ideals that will keep America strong for generations to come. Latanya, there is that, and I'm going to hand you the microphone, and in order to be heard, you got to stick it right here and you got to talk right into it, okay?
Hello, this is our 19th Annual Juneteenth Celebration, and so we're encouraging everyone to come out, and I especially want you guys to come out on Sunday for the softball game, and it's going to be at 4 o'clock in Sullivan Park.
That's right.
And it will be the Waterloo PD against Tyson's softball team. So that should be a treat, so, and then you have the schedule in front of you, Wednesday, June 18, we'll have prayer at the courthouse at 12 noon, and then that evening, prayer will be at Faith Temple by the Sister Soldiers Network, and those are veterans and those that are currently in the military. And then on Thursday, we will have Black and Brown Day, that will be in Lincoln Park. And then Friday, Crossover for Jesus Basketball Tournament, and then again, Sister Soldier Network will have a gospel concert at Mount Carmel. And then Saturday, we will have the Crossover for Jesus Basketball Championship Games, and then we'll also have the NAACP Peace March with the Crusaders Drill Team, will be starting at Union Baptist Church, marching to Gates Park. And then there will be a number of activities going on in Gates Park, we'll have a health fair, zumba, and some other activities, and then from 3 to 9, we'll move to the Museum Lot, East Fourth and Adam Street, for rhythm and blues and poetry. And then on Sunday, we'll have service in the park, Sullivan Park, at 11 a.m., and then Shout More Records will have gospel artists performing from 12 until 3:00, and then the infamous, or not so infamous...
Yes.
Softball game will begin at 4 o'clock.
Latanya, thank you. You know, this, this celebration has grown exponentially over the last few years. I remember even four years ago when I started, we celebrated it and we recognized it, but it wasn't near the, the celebration that you are, you guys are doing now, and it's really grown, it's really something to be very proud of, and you have your hand all over it, so thank you for what you do for this, and thank you to the community for celebrating Juneteenth. Thank you, Latanya, appreciate it.
Thank you.
You bet.
You guys were matching.
What's that? Oh, yeah?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor?
All right, Mr. Hart?
I'd like to make a motion to receive, place on file, and approve the consent agenda, items 1A through B54. Also with the approval of the consent agenda, I move that we make our bills payment, which will be read by our finance chair.
Bills this week are $2,600,328.20, 2,600,328.02.
Second. Counsel, do you have any further questions or comments regarding the consent agenda?
I think, I was going to say, I think maybe this is where Mr. Morrissey's going to want to be voting no against him, okay.
Hearing no comments, Madam Clerk, it's a roll call, vote, please.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes on everything but 1B8.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries, thank you, counsel. Public hearings, please, let's take item number two.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Schmidt?
Item number two is a motion to receive and file proof of publication and notice of public hearing, and that's for the Public Works salt storage facility.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries, and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, did we have any objections on file to item number two, the salt storage facility?
There were none.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against this item? A second time?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any comments regarding us building a salt storage facility? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plans, specifications, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, did you recognize appointees to commissions?
No, Abraham, I didn't, thank you very much, and I'll bet you, I'm sorry, dear, and I've got your name right here.
Tanisha.
Somewhere.
Bottom.
And I certainly should have done that. Yes, yes.
Bottom of page three, four.
Tanisha Dykman. Tanisha, thank you so much, and my apologies, because I saw you sitting out there and I thought you were just with Latanya, not just with Latanya, but you were with Latanya. Actually, I have three people that are, maybe four, that I need to recognize. So Tanisha is a new appointee to our Human Rights Commission, ladies and gentlemen, and you know, those are tough jobs, and we always appreciate people volunteering and stepping up. We couldn't do the, our jobs without it, so my apologies again for not recognizing you. Thank you for coming, and thank you for saying yes and volunteering to be on the Human Rights Commission. We look forward to the, a long relationship, so thank you very much for coming. We also reappointed John Blitch to the Civil Service Commission, so John, thank you, you're not here tonight, I don't think, but thank you, and we have two new appointments, Michael Beerbauer and John Holler, to the position of sewer maintenance worker at the Waste Management Service Department. So thank you to all of those folks, those two that we have hired, and those two that are volunteering, and Mr. Schmidt, this is your fault, because you always, you know, catch me on this, so...
I, I should have known.
So...
My apologies, man.
You're my backup.
I know, I'm sorry, I let you down.
So anyway, thank you, ladies, very much, and Tanisha, you, just a little, you don't have to stay, if you'd like to, you're welcome to, but you certainly don't have to, and if you leave, you're not going to offend anybody, so thank you for coming.
Miss all, miss all is fine.
Yeah. So anyway, there we go, boy, I slipped up on that one, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, for indulging me on that. Abraham, thank you for bringing it up. We were, I believe, taking a roll call on the resolution that was offered on item number two. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Schmidt?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution ordering construction.
Second.
Madam Clerk, it's a roll call, vote.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Very good, that motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion and receive, file, and read bids, and refer to Public Works Director for review.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Madam Clerk, would you read us the bid, please?
Certainly. We have one bid for the salt building, and the estimate is $140,000. The bid was from Aspro Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa, the bid security was 5%, and the bid amount was $54,510.54,510.00 with an alternate of $6,600.6,600.00.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item number three, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Welper?
Number three is a motion to receive and file proof of publication and notice of a public hearing for the fiscal year 2015 sidewalk inspection and repair program, zone number four.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries, and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, do we have any written objections on file to the sidewalk inspection program?
Not to the program, no.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against item number three, which is the sidewalk inspection and repair program, zone four? If there is, just step to the microphone and identify yourself, please.
My name is Don Levan, and I am representing the First Church of the Open Bible at the corner of 8th and Jefferson. We're not disputing that we need sidewalk, that's not what we're here for, but we would like an extension, and hopefully to the 15th of October. We are in the process of selling a building on commercial, and with the money that we get from there, we plan on then doing the sidewalk completely, and we're just asking that for permission or for an extension on them.
Don, thank you, I, I saw you when I came in, you were talking to the gentleman from engineering and so forth, and I, I think the way I'd like to proceed with this is that, Wayne, if, if you can, if you haven't, are you, do you need to meet further with this gentleman, or no? Are we, are we pretty squared away on, on the, the amount of this, the extension, or is there some question yet as to what the amount's going to be?
Wayne Castle, Associate Engineer. I've spoken with Mr. Levan about this particular property, there are still several, they have several parcels that make up the property, there are three that need further cleaning, and I've explained to him what needs to be done, and they're in agreeance, and they'll get that done right away. This is more just a timeframe that they want to, they want to make the repairs, but they don't have the money at this point.
Right.
So they're just asking for an extension until they have the money so they can do the repairs themselves.
Okay. Would it be appropriate, counsel, if, if we let Wayne do his work out there, let them do the cleanup that they're going to do, and when they get to that point, come back and ask counsel for an extension with a plan as to how they're going to pay it, how long it is going to be paid, and a more exact amount?
Wouldn't be, they're asking, correct me if I'm wrong, but they're asking to actually make the repairs themselves.
That is correct, they don't...
There's nothing they'd pay to us at that point if they made them to themselves, if the extension was granted.
But they have to have the extension, and, or we will, we will do it for them and then assess them.
Correct, right now with the program we're giving, property owners until July 29 to affect the repairs.
Okay.
After that, anything that's remaining would go into the city's assessment program, where the city would, city's contractor would make the repairs, so they're looking at a timeframe of September, October, to do the work, so this is really preemptive, they could come in August, possibly September, when we start with the assessment hearing and get a, you know, request at this time, but again, preemptive, they know what they want to do, they're looking for some, some help from city.
And can I ask a question, ma'am?
And right now, the, the amount that's listed here could possibly not even be the amount
that would be charged, so, I mean, it'd be nice to wait at least until we know exactly what they're facing after another walkthrough or whatever we need to do.
Correct, there is roughly 180 feet of sidewalk, that's included as a removal place, we get it cleaned and reinspected, we could see a huge reduction in that, and it could be, I believe right now it was over 12,000, we could be downward of less than 10, so...
Okay. Mr. Levan, would that work for, for you and the church if, if we don't take any action on this tonight, but do the cleanup that you are able to do now, and come back to the council sometime prior to the July 29 deadline, and hopefully have a, a better number and make the request at that time, would that work? Okay, that way it won't get on the assessment program... Okay, that way it won't get on the assessment program, and we can take care of it before that, so if you'd come back to us before the 29th. Thank you.
And I also received an email from Pastor Keller, and I sent back an email back to him, letting him know
Right.
to get in contact with Wayne.
Very good. So, it is critical that you keep that July 29th date top of mind, though, and get back to us before then, please. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral comments. Second.
Okay, before I take a vote, is there anyone else that has any comments regarding this item? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution authorizing proposed repairs to sidewalk.
Second.
And that's a roll call vote, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Thank you.
And motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution, adopting proposed resolution of necessity as proposed.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Good, thank you. That motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, let's get on with hearings. We have several hearings tonight, so item number four, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart.
A move that we receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing for the hang at the Waterloo Regional Airport.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries, and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, were there any written objections on file to our hanging at the Waterloo Airport?
There were none.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against that particular item, item number four? A second time.
Mr. Mayor, I move to close the hearing.
Second.
Counsel, any questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plans, specifications, form of contract, and bid document, et cetera.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please, it's a roll call vote.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution authorizing to proceed.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good, that motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to receive, file, and read bids, and refer to Airport Director for review.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a reso-
To read the bid?
Oops.
There was one bid received from Martinson Construction of Waterloo, Iowa, five-foot-by-five-foot round bales at $20 per bale, 20.00.
Thank you. Mr. Hart?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution approving award of contract to Martinson Construction of Waterloo, Iowa, in the amount of $20 per five-by-five-foot round bale, in conjunction with hang lease at Waterloo Regional Airport, and approving contract and certificate, and authorize Mayor and City Clerk to execute said document.
Second. It's a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Very good. Motion carries. I just wanna do a quick check. Craig, is the sound better tonight? Can you hear back there? Can you hear council members also? Okay, some are saying yes, some are saying no, so we still have some work to do. Item number, I'm sorry? Okay, I've tried to do that, you know, without too much success, but there you go. If you'll talk into the mics, maybe that would help a little bit better. Item number five, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If I could, and I apologize for this, I just realized that on the bills payment, and somebody was kind enough to circle it and put FYI on it, but I didn't see that. And so I need to, I guess better late than never, I need to abstain on a payment to Schmidt Telecom Partners on the bills payment for 30694, so just wanna get that into the record before we adjourn. And if I could, then take item number five?
Yes, please.
Okay. Item number five is a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, and that is for the request of Howard L. Allen Investments, Inc., to vacate and enter into a development agreement with Howard L. Allen Investment, Inc., to sell and convey for $1 a portion of LaPorte Road-Frontage Road, generally located between Easton Avenue and Loraine Avenue, for the construction of a 3,750-square-foot commercial building.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries, and that hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, were there any written objections on file to item number five?
There were none.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against the Howard Allen project on LaPorte Road? A second time.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion then to close the hearing and file the recommendation of approval of planning, programming, and zoning.
Second.
I'm sorry.
Counsel, do you have any questions regarding this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Jones?
What's the zoning in this area?
Noel?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. The two properties adjacent to the area in question are Zone C-2, and have been zoned that way since 1969.
Can you explain a little more what that means, or how much, what can be put there?
Sure. This is, of course, the portion of, it's a portion of LaPorte Road-Frontage Road. Looking at the map, LaPorte Road-Frontage Road is pretty inconsistent throughout this area. To the south is the Knights of Columbus, to the north is Image Point, so it was between Easton and Loraine, so there's no public purpose to keep this as a frontage road. It doesn't really effectively serve as a street section. We have LaPorte Road and US Highway 218 further to the east to move traffic through this area. The zoning, the main zoning ordinance, which we still use today, was effectively put in place in 1969, with the entire city being zoned at that time, so this land has been zoned commercially since that time. So, the parts to be vacated would go in combination with those. Under the zoning ordinance laws, the part vacated would automatically be zoned the same as what it's abutting, so it'd be Zone C-2 commercial as well, so they can use these portions to go with their development needs.
So, could you tell us what could not be built there? I mean, we're not able to find out for sure what business is gonna locate there, correct?
Correct. We know it's a, it's a commercial building. I'd speculate it's some kind of a retail use with the highway frontage and visibility there, but we don't know the exact business at this time.
So, I think maybe some of the neighbors are a little concerned about whether or not this could be a bar, or whether this could be some other things detrimental to that neighborhood. So, is it a shorter list of what couldn't be built there rather than what could?
Under the new liquor ordinance laws, it could not be built as a new liquor license or anything like that, because it's within 600 feet of residential uses.
Okay.
It's also within 600 feet, so the adult uses could not go there as well.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, Mr. Lind?
Noel, that block has two parcels.
Yes.
Enterprise and this parcel.
Correct.
But if you vacate the frontage road, aren't you cutting off one of the accesses to...
They're both, we're actually conveying both parcels, and they're both owned by Mr. Allen. The vacant parcel and the enterprise zone building are owned by Mr. Allen.
Oh, okay.
Noel, payday lender couldn't go there either, correct?
I don't recall that, is that 600 foot as well?
Yes.
Then, then, correct, they could not.
Further questions of Noel?
Timeliness of this? They are looking to begin construction. I know engineering has been out there to see the site, because they had a, they'd basically been moving some dirt on that site for some other activities, so they've really, they're ready to put the foundation in and all that. I think from a stormwater standpoint, we'd like to see the building get going right away, so we don't have concerns with drainage in that area, so it'd be great to get it all passed.
Noel, I went by there today. They're out there digging a hole.
Digging. Wishful thinking, perhaps.
In my lake.
Further questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Very good, that motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion and receive, file, consider, and pass for the first time an ordinance vacating a portion of LaPorte Road-Frontage Road, generally located between Easton and Loraine Avenue.
Second.
Very good, and that's a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to suspend the rules. Second.
Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote.
Mr. Schmidt?
Mr. Mayor, can I have a question? Noel, they in a hurry?
They're moving dirt.
Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. Lind?
No.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Very good, we'll take it up next week for the second reading. Item number six, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Hart?
A move to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing for a request by the City of Waterloo to sell and convey the four-foot portion of Lot 8, formerly 1019 Lafayette Street, to the abutting property owner at a cost, at a property owner at 1013 Lafayette Street, for Daniel Ror, for $1 plus cost to legalize the housing setback and eliminate a common shared driveway setup.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Madam Clerk, and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, are there any written objections on file to this item, item number six?
There were none.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against our item number six, this setback issue? A second time.
Mr. Mayor, I move to close the hearing.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding this item? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution authorizing sale and conveyance, and authorize city attorney to prepare and deliver deed accordingly.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries. Item number seven, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Hart?
A move to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing for a development agreement between the City of Waterloo and Elizabeth Blake LLC for the construction of a 7,500-square-foot industrial building at 2005 Westfield Avenue, adding $220,000 of taxable value to the site, and offering a grant up to $40,000 for sanitary sewer line relocation.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries, and that hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, were there any written objections on file to this item?
There were none.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against item number seven? Second time.
Mr. Mayor, I move to close the hearing.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding item number seven? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution approving said development agreement, and authorize Mayor and City Clerk to execute said document.
Second.
And that's a roll call vote, Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Item number eight, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Cole?
I move a receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing on asbestos abatement services for the following properties: 3137 Independence, 2375 Independence, 412 Lever Sea Road, and 421 Almond Street. 223 Independence and 210 Clay Street were removed from bid specifications as they were inadvertently added in error.
Second.
Very good. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries, and that hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, were there any written objections on file to item number eight?
There were none.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against item number eight, the asbestos abatement services for several properties? A second time.
I move to close the hearing.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
I move we adopt a resolution confirming approval of requests for proposals, plans, specifications, and form of contract.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please, it's a roll call.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I move we adopt a resolution authorizing to proceed.
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries.
I move to receive, file, and read bids and refer to Community Planning and Development Director for review.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. The motion carries. Madam Clerk, please.
The estimate for this was $12,000, one-two, comma, zero-zero, zero-point-zero-zero. There was three bids. The first bid is from AAA Budget Environmental, Inc. of Cedar Falls, Iowa. The bid was for $9,550, nine, comma, five-five-zero-point-zero-zero. The second bid was from Active Thermal Concepts of Hiawatha, Iowa. The bid amount was $15,310, one-five, comma, three-one-zero-point-zero-zero. And the final one is from Advanced Environmental of Waterloo, Iowa, for $8,888, eight, comma, eight-eight-eight-point-zero-zero.
Very good. Noel, you can pick those up. Madam Clerk, please, there was a request made last week, and it seems as though, see, nobody's got those bid sheets. I would really like for all of us to have those bid sheets so that we can...
They're on the back.
We had that. Okay? Everybody's got them?
Yeah.
Okay. I didn't have them. So where do you have, ladies and gentlemen?
On their council communications if they turn them over. It's on the back of each one of them.
Sorry? I don't have the communication, so I didn't get the bid sheet. So if I could make sure I've got one, I'd appreciate it.
Okay.
We have, the amended agenda shows an eight-point-five. Would somebody please take that?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Welper?
Number eight-point-five is a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of a public hearing for the reallocation of unspent bond proceeds from the 2008A general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $75,000 for a general corporate purpose, which bonds will be used to provide funds to pay costs of repairing the parking lot at the public library.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries, and that hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, were there any written objections on file to item number eight-point-five?
There were none.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to, for, or against the reallocation of some bond proceeds from our 2008 general obligation bonds? Yes, sir. Just step to the microphone and identify yourself, please.
John Sherbin, 1715 Robin Road. Another one of these bonds, why we shouldn't just put the $75,000 back against the interest. This is a 20-year bond, if I understand right, and it seems a bit excessive because we've got a little extra money that we don't put it back in the till. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Further comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I did get a call this week. Is this for the parking lot directly adjacent to the library, between the library and the bakery, former bakery building? Do we know?
I'm, our building administrator is way in the back. He can come forward and answer if you'd like, Mr. Schmidt, but he's shaking his head. Yes.
I just got a call this week asking...
Craig, why don't you come up and explain what this is, please? You can use that microphone, please.
Craig Clark, building official. Yes, it is the parking lot between the former bakery and the library. It's in asphalt. They milled it down and then resurfaced it.
But so the work is already done, correct?
Correct. The work was done...
That was the question I had a phone call about.
About a week and a half ago.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Further questions? I believe we're still in the hearing process right now, so if somebody has further comments or questions, please go ahead. If not, motion to close it. Mr. Sherbin, we can't hear you, so please come up. I'm sorry, but we can hear you, but the public can't.
John Sherbin, 1715 Robin Road. Why was this put on the agenda this week when money's already, and the work's already done? Isn't this supposed to be voted on before and not, you know, not before the work's done?
Mr. Sherbin, we have the money to pay for the project whether or not the bonds are reallocated one way or the other. The project needed to be done, so that is the process that we're following. And did I state that correctly, Ms. Wiener? So if counsel should choose to not use this funding stream for that, we have other monies that we could pay for. We think it's a good use to reallocate the bonds that we have.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral comments.
Second.
Are there further comments, counsel? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution to institute proceedings to take additional action and approve said reallocations.
Second.
Madam Clerk, that's a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Very good, thank you. Counsel, could we do, please, the first four resolutions, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, together this time? The next three are going to be lengthy that we're going to have to take, so let's do the first four at once. Mr. Morrissey, please.
I'd like to make a motion approving change order for a net decrease of $29,121.39 for work performed by Larson Construction Company of Independence, Iowa, for the fiscal year 2011 City of Waterloo Public Works Facility Construction Project Contract Number Eight-Ten and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Number Ten, a resolution approving completion of project and recommendation of acceptance of work performed by Larson Construction Company of Independence, Iowa, the total cost of $8,642,878.61 for the fiscal year 2011 City of Waterloo Public Works Facility Construction Project Contract Number Eight-Ten and authorize release of retainage in the amount of $419,263.11. And Number Eleven, a resolution approving memorandum of understanding with the Iowa Northland Regional Council of Governments, INTERCOG, in an amount not to exceed $2,000 for the writing, preparation, and submittal of a REAP grant application requesting up to $200,000 for improvements to Sherwood Park Recreation Area and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And Number Twelve, a resolution approving agreement with city attorney James E. Walsh, Jr., and Clark Butler Walsh in Hayman for legal services at the rates of $1,750 per month and at a $130 per hour for attorneys and $70 per hour for legal services.
Second. Very good. Thank you. Mr. Morrissey, counsel, are there your questions or comments regarding nine, ten, eleven, and twelve? Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote on all four, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Good. Motion carries. Item thirteen, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Cole.
I move we adopt a resolution to appoint Bankers Trust Company of Des Moines to service paying agent, bond registrar, and transfer agent, approve the paying agent and bond registrar and transfer agent agreement, and authorize the execution of the agreement for $10,065,000 in general obligation bonds, Series 2014A.
Second.
Very good. Counsel, do you have any questions regarding this item? Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries.
I move we adopt a resolution to authorize the issuance of said bonds and levying a tax to pay said bonds, approve the tax exemption certificate, the continuing disclosure certificate, and funding trust agreement securing the refunding of GO bonds, Series 2006A.
Second.
Very good. Roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries. Item number fourteen, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart.
Move to adopt a resolution to appoint Bankers Trust Company of Des Moines, Iowa, to serve as paying agent, bond registrar, and transfer agent, approve the paying agent and bond registrar and transfer agent agreement, and authorizing the execution of the agreement for $4,970,000 general obligation bonds taxable Series 2014B.
Second. Very good. Counsel, do you have any questions regarding item fourteen? Madam Clerk, it's a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution to authorize the issuance of said bonds and levying a tax to pay said bonds, approve the continuing disclosure certificate, and approve the funding trust agreement securing the refunding of capital loan notes, Series 1998.
Second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries. Item fifteen, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt.
Item fifteen, I'd like to adopt a resolution to appoint Bankers Trust Company of Des Moines, Iowa, to service paying agent, bond registrar, and transfer agent, approve the paying agent, bond registrar, and transfer agent agreement, and authorizing the execution of the agreement, and that's for $8,515,000 in general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2014C.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions regarding this item? Madam Clerk, please.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution to authorize and provide for issuance of said bonds and levying a tax to pay said bonds, approve the tax exempt certificate, exemption certificate, and approve the continuing disclosure certificate, and approve refunding trust agreement securing the advanced refunding of general obligation bonds, Series 2007A.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries. Thank you very much. Let's do sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
I'd like to make a resolution approving submittal of a state recreational trails funds application to Iowa Department of Transportation for $750,000 with local match not to exceed $400,000 for the Highway 63 Recreation Trail Extension and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Number Seventeen, a resolution approving right-of-way license agreement with CBE Companies Incorporated allowing the use of city right-of-way for a communication system and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And Number Eighteen, a resolution approving property lease and exchange lease agreements with RNS Commercial LLC and RNS Rental LLC, parentheses, SJ Construction, parentheses, of Waterloo, Iowa, for the lease of city-owned land located on the northwest corner of East Ninth and Sycamore Streets in the amount of $1 for a term ending December 31, 2014 and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding sixteen, seventeen, or eighteen?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
On number seventeen, I will have to, or should probably abstain from voting as CBE Companies is my employer, although I have no financial interest in this particular item. It's just probably safer to do so. But also, along those lines, this is a great project connecting an existing building in Waterloo to a new building in Waterloo, which will produce up to 400 new jobs in Waterloo. So it's really exciting.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Jones. It is a great project. Tom Pinalena is doing some great work in the community, providing a lot of jobs. Counsel, do you have any further questions regarding sixteen, seventeen, or eighteen? Comments? Madam Clerk, please, it's a roll call vote.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes, on sixteen and eighteen, and abstain on seventeen.
Very good. The motion carries. Item number nineteen, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt.
Number nineteen, I'd like to adopt a resolution to approve amending the general rules for public participation at city council meetings for speaking from a maximum of three minutes to a maximum of five minutes.
Second.
Very good, there's a motion to second. Counsel, I'm sure there'll be some comments. You want to start it out? Anybody?
Well, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt?
Excuse me, somebody else.
Mr. Welper?
Yes, I was, I was wondering if, this is a procedural question, Mr. Mayor, if we could ask the movers of this for a friendly amendment to the resolution.
You can ask that. Pat, we're going to have to work through this with my recent discovery of some rules. I think that I sent you all communication that, you can ask for that. I'm not sure if you have to be more specific in your request. I think you're going to ask, have to ask to amend the motion, and you're going to have to name what you want to amend it to, I believe, but I'm going to need some help on this because we're not doing things the way we're used to, and I'm going to rely on our clerk and our city attorney for some direction on how we need to, we have to dispose of the original motion. So the original motion has been made, and now we have to dispose of that one way or the other. The maker has to withdraw it. You have to make a motion to amend it, which then has to receive a second and pass, and then you make another motion. Madam Clerk, help me.
Or Mr. Morrissey could ask Mr. Schmidt to amend his if Mr. Lind will second it.
Okay.
The original people could amend theirs if he wants to ask for something.
Yes, I would just like to make a friendly amendment, make, or ask the mover for a friendly amendment to say or speak to the issue of a condition on raising it to five minutes, that we keep it at three minutes, but if those who want to speak for five minutes, they need to contact the city clerk by 5:00 PM on Monday to request that five-minute period of time.
On Monday or on Friday?
On Monday would be the friendly amendment. Monday by 5:00 PM.
I would ask that if you're going to make that motion, you say four, because I'm no longer in my office after four, because I'm usually up here.
Then by 4:00 PM.
Well, I guess my initial thought on that would be, I guess I don't see the benefit in that, Patrick, so I guess I would respectfully say no.
Okay. So the request for an amendment to the original motion has been denied by the maker, and I'm assuming that you don't want to withdraw your motion, Mr. Schmidt?
Correct.
So, so we'll just proceed with further comments.
Can I ask a point of clarification?
You may ask.
If, something like that. If the, since the original motion will probably stand, and if that's voted down, can he still, somebody still come back with the similar amendment to what he just made?
That is my understanding, that we will take a vote on the motion. If the motion fails, then someone can make a secondary motion. I'm not sure of what the correct term, another motion. So is there further comment from counsel regarding item number nineteen?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I guess I just have a couple of comments. You know, number one, I appreciate the counsel voting Thursday morning of the agenda to put this item on, and, you know, part of that conversation Thursday morning was, I think most of us in our grade school or high school years are educated on the value of local participation in local government, and I think, you know, that's the whole purpose of this, and as we look at the clock tonight, and it's 6:25, so we've been meeting for less than an hour, and a lot of our meetings, or several of our meetings, go 20 minutes, half an hour. I don't see, you know, the downside to allowing those that want to spend their time coming down here and speaking to us and sharing their thoughts and ideas with us, I don't see the downside of expanding that three minutes to five minutes, because I do think that that's what we should be as a council, trying to encourage, is our local citizens participating with us in the things that we do here at the council meetings. I also believe, if I'm not mistaken, and I might have to refer to Noel or Rudy on this, but at our planning and zoning, our CDBG meetings, our Board of Adjustment meetings, I don't think we have any limitations on the timeframe allowed for folks to speak at that. So why we have this on here, I'm not sure, but having said that, I'm not interested in, you know, making this unlimited, as Counsel and Welper suggested too, that I think five minutes is, you know, a very reasonable amount of time, and so I'd respectfully hope that we can get that approved. The other thing I did just want to mention, I did get a call today from somebody who saw tonight's courier, which I didn't see, and again, just for clarification purposes, I want to make sure what we're talking about in this motion is item number two under general rules for public participation, item number four, where it talks about a person may speak one time per item for a maximum of three minutes, that's going to five minutes, but that's going to five minutes, but I believe then that that would be on any item on the agenda and oral comments. And I was told, and I didn't see today's courier, but I was told in the courier, it said that it was only on the, uh, oral comments at the end of the meeting. So I did just want to make sure there's no misunderstanding on that. And then also to revisit, uh, Councilmember Cole's comment about changing these items two and four to the five-minute rule is a great idea, or, I'm sorry, i- if we did that also, then reaffirming to everyone, item number five about keeping comments germane and refrain from personal impertinent or slanderous remarks, and also, of course, keeping in mind, you as the presider have the gavel, so hopefully that doesn't happen, but if it does, you have the ability to, to bring that to a halt. So, those would be my comments, and I hope we, uh, pass this unanimously.
Tim, can you come to the podium and tell us what you've written?
Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. Lynn.
Um, my thought, it's two minutes, two minutes isn't gonna kill us, it may add fifteen minutes to the meeting, but let's try it, if it doesn't work, we can always switch it, go back, that's my thought.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Welper.
I, I have to say that I'm really gonna stay with the three-minute re- resolution, simply because you, as mayor, have been very good about really not restricting people to the three minutes, even when the clock goes off, you do allow people to speak longer than the, than the three minutes. Uh, I, I don't like the clock, uh, I, I would rather that you be in charge of that. The, uh... Talking to Mayor Hurley, I'm kinda losing my train of thought here, but talking to Mayor Hurley over the weekend, he said that speaking in Des Moines, uh, at three minutes, they cut the mic off. I don't think we have to go that far to do that, I think you can use discretion when to, to cut people off, but, uh, I, I'm gonna stay with the three minutes, simply because you are allowing more than three minutes, actually. We go to five, it's gonna be eight minutes, or nine minutes, or ten minutes.
Or it could be five, we could enforce the rules, Ryan.
Okay. There's, I believe someone has their hand up out there that would like to speak. Uh, again, I would like to get you to the microphone, if you could, I'm not sure, Steve, if that, or Abraham, or if somebody could help, uh, get the mic to him, or come up here, that's why we have the ramp now, also. I'm not sure, is that gonna reach, Bill? Okay, very good. Just give us your name and address, please, sir.
Bruce D. Kazer, 627 Sycamore Street, number 605.
Hey, Bruce.
And, okay, now, let's just ask somebody from, like, developing, like, a team of speakers who take turns presenting their views for their three minutes. Pretty...
If, if there's, if there's a team of speakers, uh, Mr. Kazer, what I, we, we've often had that situation where we'll have a topic where you have several, uh, different people that wanna speak. Uh, I mean, I wouldn't necessarily call it a team, but it, it's not unusual that we have a topic that has garnered a lot of interest, that you would have several people that wanna speak. I've always allowed everybody that wants to speak their three minutes, uh, within reason, obviously. I, you know, after a while, people start saying the very same thing, and we have twenty people saying the exact same thing, and I might suggest that they all get together and have one speaker. But generally speaking, I always allow however many people are in the audience that wanna speak, I allow them to speak. I use the term three minutes, as Mr. Welper says, I, I rarely have cut anybody off at three minutes. But anyway, that's the, that would be the case.
Also, is there any, uh, number of times the same topic can be brought up, discussion?
I, I'm not sure what the...
Is there a limit on how many times a topic can be brought up?
No, there is not.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Mr. Mayor, if, my train of thought is back.
Congratulations. That was quick.
It's getting old.
Forrest, I'll recognize you in just a minute, but I don't want Ron to lose his train of thought.
Yeah, gotta act quick when you get, anyway, uh, the, the, uh, time clock.
Yes, sir.
Uh, the, the time clock can be used when we have a, maybe a hot topic, where we have a large number of people to, to, uh, to speak, then I can see where maybe the time clock is important. Other than that, I don't think it's really necessary. Like I say, you've been, you've been very good about allowing people to talk, even when there's not a hearing, you allow people to address, uh, the issue, and maybe you shouldn't be doing that, but you've been very good about letting people speak.
Thank you, uh, and if you'll notice, the clock is gone tonight. And, uh, if you'll also remember, and just for, from my standpoint, you know, I, I did away with the clock when I became mayor, and it was gone for about three and a half years, almost four years, and I didn't use it at all. And I only brought it back at the insistence of some of council members, that the, the comments were getting out of control, and they were going too long, and needed to do something, so I brought it back. But with this situation, I have removed it, and, uh, it's, it's put a well, put away in a safe location. Forrest.
Forrest Dilavu, 1725 Huntington Road. Uh, you folks are elected by the people, you are to be the people's representatives. It's supposed to be government of the people, by the people, and for the people. And if you give us less than five minutes, how can a person be represented fairly? You know, five minutes isn't very much. Not everybody has as much practice at speaking at this mic as I do, but, you know, some of the folks that, elderly folks or whatever, have a little trouble getting it across. And I think five minutes is very easy to handle, and, uh, I think you should do that.
Thank you, Forrest.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Welper.
Just to address that, Forrest, we all have telephones, we all have email, we all have mailboxes. You can, uh, contact us anytime.
I don't have an email, and I don't have...
Yes, sir.
Bill Kaymeyer, 526 Home Park Boulevard, Waterloo, Iowa. I think it's, I, I think it's only right that I get up here and talk, 'cause I'm probably the one that started all this mess. I agree with, with what you said, Mr. Welper, but that's not the point. I understand that I got a telephone, I, I understand that I got a TV, I understand that I got an email, I got, I understand I got all of that, but the fact of the matter is, you're a public employee. You're getting paid, you're getting paid to do this job, this isn't for free. You work for us, and I think we have the right to come down and look at you eyeball to eyeball and express our concerns. It really bothers me when we, when I come down here and I do get involved in government. It's, it's, it's not your option whether you agree or disagree with me or not. You chose to take this job, you chose to run for this job, you're choosing to accept the paycheck. That means you're working for us, everybody up here, every one of you is working for us. We have the right to come down here and express our concerns. You've even gone so far as to call us names. I don't think we've participated in anything that I'm aware of, of ever calling anybody up here names.
Who's calling who names, sir?
I understand that you all have a job to do, and I expect you to do them. You want me to name the names, is that what you're gonna ask me? Anti-government?
I've never called anybody names.
McCarthyism? Dis- disconnected, or what was the last remark of the paper about what we was doing? I don't care about that, you know, sticks and stones will break my bones, but words will never hurt me, so I really don't care about that. But the point is, is that we try to tell our kids, and we try to tell young people, get involved in government, get involved in government. We come down here, and you treat us like we're your enemy. We're not your enemy, we're your employer. Why, what happened just now? This guy, this gentleman got up and made a, made a comment about spending, you spending seventy-five dollars, or seventy-five thousand dollars, and where did the money come from? Did anybody up there address that? No, you didn't say anything. You didn't make a comment about, well, here's the reason that we think that it's best that we spend this money instead of this money. Now, wouldn't it have been appropriate to explain to us, the public, why you choose to spend this amount of money over here, when, when the mayor stated that we got the money, but we're gonna spend borrowed money? That's just a point, that's, that's what I'm talking about. The reason that we come down here is because you don't explain things to us. You could shut us off in a heartbeat. If you had conversations among yourselves, out here in public, I'll stay home and keep my feet on the TV and drink my Pepsi and smoke my cigarette. I come down here because I wanna learn something. That's the reason that we come down here, and that's the reason we speak. Now, I don't like to use the word "public servant," but you've heard that many times. I don't like that word, I think you're public employees. I think that's more respectable, because whether you guys know it or not, I respect every one of you. You've ran for the job, you chose to do that, you choose to sit up there. The other option you don't have is, you don't have any option, who sits beside you, that's our choice. Your responsibility is to get along with everybody up there, including the public. It's not your choice, we pick who sits there. If you don't like who sits there, it's easy to get out of this job, stand up, I resign, and walk out the door. We'll find somebody to take your place, get along. We have the right to disagree with you, but when we disagree with you, explain where we're wrong. I don't, I don't object to that, if I'm wrong when I come up here, the only time I've really been wrong, I should've been slapped right side the head, is when I tried to break this mic. I was wrong there, and you should've stopped me there, and I wouldn't have blamed you a bit. But that's, again, beside the point, explain stuff to us. You're, he referred to the fact that some of your meetings last twenty minutes, half an hour. What are you telling us in twenty minutes and a half an hour? Nothing, nothing. All you gotta do is talk to us, you got the podium, you got the mic, you got the facilities. Talk to us, explain it to us, what are you doing, why are you doing it? I probably would agree if I knew some of the reasons, and I wouldn't be here. So, I don't think five minutes is unreal. I'm not afraid to get up here and talk, neither are my cohorts that come up here and talk either. We're not afraid to get up here and talk, but a lot of people are. And when you stand up to this microphone, in public, looking at you, knowing the TV cameras are on, they get gun shy, and your mind goes faster in your mouth, and it doesn't come out your mouth the way you want it to. And that's hard to do. So, all I'm asking, and all I'm suggesting is, let people be more relaxed up here. The clock, the time limit, it works on your head if you're not used to this kind of stuff. So, I don't think that's being unrealistic, five minutes is not near unrealistic. And guess what, when I served, our meetings started at seven o'clock, and we were lucky to get out of there by eleven. And I don't think it's unrealistic to think that maybe, just maybe, because you're being paid, it's not really unrealistic to think maybe you oughta sit out here in public for an hour, hour and a half, because you're gonna take the time to explain it to the public why you're doing what you're doing? That's all you gotta do. I can buy it, even though I disagree with you, if I hear your reasoning, I could probably buy it. So, that's the real reason about the five-minute rule. Now, if you got any questions to ask me, I'm fair game, let me have it, what do you wanna know? Now, I'll finish the little sticks and stones will break my bones and words will never hurt me. Do you know the rest of that? I was taught it at a very young age. Consider the source and let it pass for ignorance, so let's get off the name-calling game.
Steve Murphy, 124 Terrace Drive. To me, the issue is, is centers on transparency, and the email's a great option, the phone call's a great option, but they're not transparent. They're one-on-one, two-on-one, something like that. And I, I think I like the idea of public knowing, public learning more. I've learned a lot from the speakers with the microphone that I would not have known. I'm not on their emails, and they're not forwarding emails to me, so I've used both emails, and I've used, um, phone calls, and I've used this podium, and I like the podium for transparency. And there are a lot of email addresses, and, and I've sent emails, I've not received a response from everyone on the council via email. So, they can push that aside, forget it, get busy, whatever the situation might be, disagree and don't wanna respond to an email. This is transparent government here, much more than email, much more than phone call. And I'm gonna say, I love what Mr. Lynn said, let's try it, we're not, we don't have a heart that we gotta get back in a chest in a certain timeframe, let's try it for six months, diary your calendar six months ahead, look back and say, was it better, worse, indifferent, whatever, and then take a vote on it. But it's free, try it for six months, see what happens, thanks for your time.
Josh Wilson, 2831 Saratoga. Basically, I was gonna say exactly, uh, what Steve just said about transparency, uh, in the, I, I think it is fair, uh, to have this portion. I, I tend to agree with Councilman Welper, your initial statement at the agenda meeting, uh, last, or this past Thursday, about not having a time limit, because, um, I can't even count on my fingers how many times Mayor Hurley told me to sit down, 'cause I was talking too long, and I like Mayor Hurley, but that was his job as mayor, was to, you know, it's time to be quiet, Josh, and I respect that. Uh, so I, I'd lean more towards not having a time limit at all, and letting, you know, the mayor or, or whoever up here decide when it's out of hand or time for us to sit down. I, I also wanna piggyback off what Steve, uh, said about transparency and whatnot. I've said this before up here, um, you know, I don't know how many times I hear, you know, I heard it tonight from, uh, Councilman Schmidt, you know, he received an email about, about this, and, um, I'd, I'd like to have those conversations out in public, and I'd like to know, you know, that person was probably scared to come down here and speak, uh, so that's probably why they emailed them, and I'm sure it's not just Councilman Schmidt, it's probably all of you, but, um, I just don't think you should have a time limit at all. Another thing that I've heard repetitively is that, you know, people may be coming down here to get attention or spotlight on TV, um, as a communications graduate from you and I, I have to say, if you're coming down here to get famous off public access television, it's probably not working out too well. You have a better chance going across the street to KWWL and hoping that Mark Schnackenberg's doing his weather on the sidewalk if you wanna get exposure. So I don't think that anyone down here is, is doing it to be a celebrity, I'm certainly not. I can't stand, uh, how I look on the television when I re-watch it at home. So, um, I just, I agree with Steve, I, I wish that you guys would, um, you know, have the conversations out in public, um, I also agree that it forces council members to address the, the problem, 'cause you cannot respond to emails. Uh, Councilman Welper, you may not be aware, so I'm not accusing you of anything, but your email's not listed on the city website.
That's, that's correct, but anything that goes through the city, I get.
Okay, um, you know, but there's not an email for all council members, for citizens to, to email. So, I just wanted to say that, you know, we can call and, and talk with you, but it's not the same as putting you on the spot in front of everybody else, so, uh, and that's our right as citizens, so, thanks very much. And you know what, if it helps, I guess, you know, we could always put the five-minute rule in, and then you could make like a one-minute rule for Bill Kaymeyer, if you wanted to, so... Like I said, it's, it's up to you guys, really, um, so, let us talk, and I just, I don't want anyone not to vote for this 'cause of Bill, so...
So the Jordan rules, like the Bill rules.
Maybe here at 111 Highland, I'm just, a brief couple s- sentences. I hope you can understand that there's not, there's no animosity out here in the audience. They really wanna work with you guys, they wanna talk with you folks, they wanna find the best way to do this, and they wanna be informed. I think if, if you can understand that, you'll see that whether it's three minutes, five minutes, fifteen minutes, unlimited, they'll be down here to work with you guys.
Thanks, Randy.
I'm Aggris Apprens, 1319 Pintail Drive.
What, what was your first name, sir?
Aggris.
August, thank you.
A-G-R-I-S.
No, Aggris.
Aggris, okay.
Actually, you know, this is gonna come up on the council meeting, I think, next week, on the, uh, 148, uh, housing development.
Okay, okay, sir, I, I don't mean to cut you off, I mean, it's not because of time, but we're, right now, we're, we're discussing an item that's on the agenda about whether or not to extend our time limit.
I just thought I'd drop it in there, because...
Okay, no.
Actually, I should probably talk to the...
Yeah, let's, let's wait, as soon as we, as soon as we dispose of this item, I'll open it up for general conversation, and I'd love to hear your comments then, please, okay? So don't go too far away, just, it just, you're, you're just one item too soon. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Are there further comments from the audience regarding the, uh, time extension issue? If not, I'm gonna turn it over to council, council, are there any further comments from council?
Mr. Mayor, I just had a quick comment, um, yeah, I've been thinking long and hard about, um, this particular issue, and the, the only challenge I would have with, um, not having a clock is not because we'd be here too long, but, you know, not in regards to you, because I agree with, uh, Councilman Welper, you've done a very decent job at allowing people to, to go over to three minutes or whatever it was, to complete their thoughts. But the challenge come, if you're not in that seat, and someone else is there, I think it's, it gets a little bit to be subjective when somebody comes up and you say, you stop, and then someone else comes up, and then we allow them to continue on, if there was no time clock. So at least, whether it's three minutes, it's five minutes, everyone has, uh, an, an equal opportunity to express themselves at a certain timeframe without being cut off. So, I guess I can understand the philosophy of let, letting everyone continue on and leaving it at the discretion of the, the mayors to cut it off, or the mayor pro tem, but I think there has to be some, some type of timeframe, and if a person is having some trouble communicating their thoughts, then it's up to the discretion to allow them to continue that. But there has to be, do something to create some type of equity within the comments that people want to make, and not making it subjective based upon whether not you, but another mayor, or another mayor pro tem, may not like that particular individual. But, um, I'm, I'm more so in favor of if a person calls, uh, by four o'clock on Monday to indicate they would like to make comments, you know, it can be five, it can be several minutes, but I think I'm more in tune to that particular direction.
Let's see where this first motion goes.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just ask a couple of quick questions. Number one, I don't think anywhere in this conversation the clock is involved, so I don't know why we keep talking about the clock, I don't see the clock anywhere on here. And so, I don't think the clock's got anything to do with what we're talking about. Either the clock is there, or the clock's not there, but that's got nothing to do with the three minutes, the five minutes.
Well, how do you, how do you keep track of three minutes and five minutes on the clock?
I'm just saying, Quentin, it's nowhere on here, so whether we do three minutes, whether we do five minutes, the clock is a separate issue. Clock, clock is not on here, I don't know how we got to a conversation about the clock, but the clock is not part of the motion, it's not part of the rules, I don't know why we're talking about the clock. That's just, that's...
How do we keep track of the time, man?
Well, that's a separate conversation.
So you're saying what we're voting on has nothing to do with the timeframe?
What we're voting on here has to do with three minutes, five minutes.
That's time.
Do you see the clock mentioned anywhere?
So, okay, so the public doesn't know that we're talking about a particular fixture of time on a clock? Maybe I'm, maybe I'm not tracking, but take away clock, and let's, and let me rephrase my comments, three or five minutes, is that better?
Well, but, but you're talking about the clock that Mayor Hurley has had, is that the clock you're talking about, or are you talking about the clock on the wall?
I was talking about if, if we leave it subjective, that a person comes up, it was mentioned earlier about not having any time earlier, just allowing people to speak, which would be okay, but it's subjective when we tell a person that comes up, and I'm not talking about, uh, Mayor Clark, and a person comes up we may not like. I think, uh, Mr. Wilson indicated earlier that he would get told to stop your comments right then and sit down. So if we have no opportunity for a person to have equity within their conversation to the council, then we leave it up to something subjective to make a decision on how much a person gets to speak and who doesn't, which, it's three or five minutes is what's being discussed. So, I mean, if, if I misled about the clock, I'm talking about time, and time is in this motion, maximum three minutes or maximum five minutes, that's right here, right?
Right, but, but the previous conversation had to do with the clock, with the buzzer that cuts people off, and that, that's the clock I'm talking about, it's not part of this conversation. And going back to what we're saying, uh, three minutes, five minutes, where we get subjective is where we allow people to go over, I mean, again, this is a rule, and the rule right now is three minutes, and we're talking about moving the rule to five minutes. You can talk less than three minutes or less than five minutes, but the rule is, you don't go over the five minutes. And I have heard, in the six and seven years I've been on the council, that both the current mayor and the former mayor were not, uh, uh, they did not treat everyone the same, that they would allow one person to talk longer and then not allow another. And I think, again, that's why we have these rules, is that at five minutes, regardless of who the speaker is, at five minutes, they're to be done, and they're to be told, okay, your time's up. It's that simple, and I think we're making this way too complicated. So, and, and the, talk about the clock, I thought it had to do with the buzzer and, and cutting people off. So that's what I was saying, that buzzer clock is not in the motion, nowhere on here.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morris.
I just wanted to let you know that, uh, I wanted to, uh, try to find out how other cities handled this. And so I had contact with, uh, city clerks, uh, from, or people associated with the city clerk's office in Dubuque and Sioux City, Cedar Rapids, Davenport. I didn't get Des Moines to call me back, that's probably because it's the state of Des Moines, but, um, I did get Council Bluffs also to call me back. And what I found in there that, um, was that, uh, in, they have rules, some of them are contained within ordinances, some of them are like resolutions, like what, what you, uh, presented, uh, to us in our boxes. But, uh, some of them allow three minutes, some of them allow five minutes, uh, one of them allowed ten to fifteen minutes, some of them have that separated out, uh, this type of comment, this type of comment. But one of the things that I saw a thread throughout was that the mayor is the presider, or the mayor pro tem is the presider, and that person carries the weight, and that is a responsibility that they take on when they become mayor, uh, to run the meeting and to run the meeting a... to run the meeting accordingly. And having seen these differences and the times, I mean, some of these resolutions go all the way back before our first one that you gave us of 1993 to the 1980s. And some of them have been tweaked a little bit, just like Mayor Hurley did in 2009. I, the reason why I'm, I'm going to vote against this is because I believe that your authority in handling this meeting as a presider should not in any way be diminished. I think that you're saying that this, you want to have it at this, you've been flexible with it. The only thing that I would add to that is that I think that if Steve would go back and look at that friendly amendment that people call in, if they want to speak for five minutes, they call in at four o'clock, what that does is it not only leaves the responsibility to the mayor to decide if he's going to accept that, but then it also puts a responsibility on our citizenry, that if they want to speak more than the allotted time, that they have a responsibility then to call in and to ask for that time, and I think, I think that's how government should work.
Thank you, Pat. Is there any further comments from council? Josh, you've had the one time.
Did I speak for a few minutes?
I don't have a clue. I wasn't watching.
What are they asking for?
You know, the...
Let me ask the point of clarification.
Okay, you may, again, you know, here's the flexibility that I've been accused of not having. It says on the rules, you speak one time on one topic, so if we go by the rules, you can't talk anymore.
I know, but Mr. Kaymeyer spoke for like ten minutes while I was in the back.
I'm just pointing, I'm pointing out the inconsistencies. It's very hard...
That's why we're having this discussion.
Okay, let me finish, please, okay? The rules are you speak for one time for three minutes, and that's it. So I'm fine if you come back up and restate something, re-clarify something, but what I'm getting at is it's very difficult to sit here and tell you what to do. When you've got it in your mind, you, you've got the right. You're a paying citizen. You want to come back up and come to the microphone again. What am I going to do? You know?
Well, and that's why, that's why I think, and I just want to clarify, that's why I think the rule should be five minutes, and you should enforce it for every citizen. So I think that's what Councilman Hart was getting at with the buzzer or the clock that Hurley had. I think that any citizen that speaks for five minutes should be told, you know, afterwards that their time's expired, or they don't even have to be told. Put the, "It used to be here, it used to tell me." So then we wouldn't have this problem, but we haven't been enforcing the time for anything. But I just wanted to make a couple points of clarification. Like Councilman Welper, I too had a forgetful moment, and I remembered a few things I wanted to say. First of all, and now I'm all flustered again. First of all, sometimes I come to a council meeting and I'm not planning to say anything, and then something that happens at the meeting makes me want to comment on it. So I don't like the idea of having to call the city clerk's office before the meeting happens, because I don't know before the meeting happens if there's anything that I'm going to want to say. And then, so that's my problem I have with that amendment. But I guess I would just want to clarify, and, and I, I think this is what Mr. Schmidt's trying to say, so he'll have to clarify, but I would like all public comments restricted to five minutes, and everyone to be held to that same standard. When I used to be told to stop talking under Mayor Hurley, he did the same thing for other people. When this thing buzzed, it was kind of a signal to the whole room that that person was to stop talking. And then I'd finally just like a point of clarification for Councilman Morsi. Do you really think the way government is supposed to operate is the people are supposed to ask their public servants for permission? Because you just said you think that's how government should work.
Do you want me to respond?
You don't have to, Pat. It's not necessarily a question and answer, period, so. So it's comments well taken, and I'm sure that Mr. Morsi would respond to you in kind if you'd email or call him or speak to him individually.
Yeah, after the meeting.
We, we try not to get in a, in a debate.
Right.
Josh, from council to citizens.
I understand that. I guess I would just say, that's how government works. You're supposed to have a debate.
Okay, thank you. Hopefully, it's becoming clear how difficult it is to maintain order. Yes, sir, Mr. Kizer, do you want to speak a second time?
Okay, I've got a suggestion for the council members. If citizens reach you for comments or suggestion ideas, they want us to speak to you, help them develop their comments into nice, precise, concise, short terms, so they can express themselves plainly, clearly, in the time limits, and then encourage them also to come and offer their oral presentations.
Thank you, Mr. Kizer. That would be wonderful if they would do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You did a great job.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to, we're going to call for the question here, I believe, unless there's some burning comments from council. There's been a motion and a second on item nineteen. Madam Clerk, it's a roll call, vote.
Mr. Lind.
Yes.
Mr. Morsi.
No.
Mr. Welper.
No.
Mr. Hart.
No.
Ms. Cole.
No.
Mr. Jones.
No.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Very good.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay, that motion fails. Who spoke? I didn't hear. Mr. Morrison.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a, do I do this as a resolution or as an amendment?
Now, it's, it's a new motion.
It's a, just make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion for a resolution to approve amending the general rules for public participation at city council meetings for speaking from a maximum of three minutes to five minutes, as long as a person requesting the five minutes or longer got, that request submitted to the city clerk by 4:00 p.m. on the Monday of the meeting with the approval of the mayor.
Mr., I just, before we complete that, I want to add...
Yeah, I just, I think, I think we can clarify that a bit, but I know what you're saying, and I'm hopeful that the clerk can, can put that into words. But Mr. Hart?
But you're also stating that if a person is at the meeting and they want to have three minutes, they still maintain that three minutes, right? But if they call in to speak to an issue or for oral presentations, they get priority and they get the additional minutes to go with them.
Yes, yes, correct.
I think that was understood, but good clarification, yeah. So the motion, I believe, and again, I'm, I don't want to put any words in anybody's mouth, but I'll try to restate the motion. If someone has an issue or an item that they would like to address the council to, and they have it in enough forethought that they can call into the clerk's office by four o'clock on Monday, I mean, they can call in any time up to that, but if they call in by four o'clock on Monday, give us their name and address, they may speak four, five minutes on that issue. Is that your motion?
Or longer if they so request and approved by the mayor.
Okay. Okay. Is there a second to that?
Yeah, second.
Okay, I'm sorry, there's a second by Mr. Hart. Is there comments on that motion? Pretty straightforward. Madam Clerk, let's do a roll call on that, please. Mr. Mayor. Mr. Schmidt.
I'm sorry. I guess I'm, I'm a little bit troubled by this, I mean, I'm supportive of much of what Councilman Morsi is making in his motion, but I guess I'm a little bit concerned about, I constantly hear about how the council are the elected officials, and we're the only ones that have the vote, but now we're basically being told that, that the mayor is going to be the person that has the authority to allow, pick a name at his or her whim to allow a person to talk beyond the five minutes. It just seems like that has an awful lot of opportunity for problems. I, I don't understand why we wouldn't just leave it at five minutes.
And, Mr. Schmidt, I'm only speaking for myself. I think that that would be the case, you know, and I think a good example of what Mr. Morsi, again, I'm trying to put words in anybody's mouth, may be speaking about is the gentleman that's here tonight to speak about the housing addition. He knew that he was coming, okay, much earlier today. He might have a whole set of plans, a whole set of circumstances and issues that he wants to present to council. It may take him more than three minutes to present that. He could have called today and say, "Madam Clerk," or "Susie, I want to come to the council to meeting tonight. I'm going to be there. I'm going to speak about Hummingbird Circle, and I'm probably going to need more than three minutes." She would have said, "Fine." He would have been on the agenda, and he would get the additional minutes.
But it would be to five, or it would be to your whim, is my question?
Well, I hate the word whim.
Well, but when we're talking about...
It's, it's, you know...
But when we're saying unlimited, at, at the mayor's choice is what I, I thought I heard you say.
I would like to, I would like to see it stay at five minutes.
Well, that's, that's my point.
That would be my point, but it's Mr. Morsi's motion, not mine.
Well, I understand, but we're having this conversation. That's what, you know, because...
Mr. Schmidt. Can I just interrupt just real quick?
Yes, sir.
And, and the reason why I'm saying that is because in the documents that we were given, both of them, if you have those in front of you, both in 1993 with Mayor Al Manning and in 2009 with Mayor Hurley, one of the first things that's talked about as far as oral presentations is a statement that says that although not required by city code of ordinances, oral presentations may be allowed at the chair presiders, which is usually the mayor and the mayor pro tem's discretion. Now, that's been stated, and that's in the form of a resolution ever since 1993. And that's why I added that. The three minutes is in there. Everybody can talk. We're talking about time beyond that, that people would be asked to call in, request that additional time, and then the mayor take a look at it and use what is his authority as a mayor to decide whether he's going to use that. That's why that's there.
Okay, and, 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 I think it's good discussion that the motion is what it is, what's been made, and...
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Lind.
That's going to put you in a tough position, because you're going to have people calling in, and there'll be a payday loan issue or some big issue that you'll get organized, opposition for or against or whatever, and they'll all want to make presentations for ten minutes, and you're the ones going to have to say, "Maybe you favor it? Yes, you guys can all do it." And then the next group's going to get, "Well, we don't have enough time." That, well, that's going to put you in a tough position. I think we just should have five minutes, and that's it.
Okay.
The motion failed.
Good, good comments, and we have someone that's requested to speak, so please do. New topic here.
Steve Murphy, 124 Terrace Drive. I guess where I'm challenged by this is a couple of things. Things show up on the agenda that are added here at this meeting. So we might not know what's on the agenda. If we show up here at the meeting, there are stuff that changed tonight, and it might be a, a big issue for somebody. The, the second thing is, I'm not sure the city clerk has time to take eight or ten people, because it's already been roundtable in the back of the room. We'll just have a standing phone call, reserve the right to speak for more than five minutes or three minutes, and just send the, you know, keep that card in our pocket. The biggest thing I'm hearing from, from Mr. Morsi that I really disagree with is at the, I don't want to use the word whim, help me out, at the approval of the mayor. I mean, he, the mayor kind of already owns the, to a large extent, the agenda. I, I think there's a lot of control there. I'm not really sure that the mayor should be the sole discretion over who talks and who doesn't talk and for what time. I, I think that thing is moving backwards from the transparency that we even have today, because I'm not going to know if I get turned down, why. Thank you for your time.
Dave? Yes, sir.
We're in here at 111 Highland. I just want to help people recall something. Back when Tim Hurley was mayor, we had a big issue come to town, and that big issue was the national property maintenance codes. And on the third reading of it down here, Mayor Hurley decided to shut the public off and not allow anybody to speak. People had spoke at the first couple of readings, but he cut it off on the third one, and they went through and they passed it. There were probably a hundred people down here that night. I grant you, that's a lot of people, and it was going to be a raucous thing, and people were going to get up and talk, and some would probably be emotional. There were a lot of angry people that left that night. So some of us, myself included, we got together and decided to hold a citizens' meeting. We invited the city, and the city did come. But that night, because of the lack of ability to talk, we had over 300 people come to that meeting. We controlled it. We didn't let anybody get up and get mad. We citizens controlled it. Everybody who participated had to write their question down. They were sorted so that they didn't get asked more than once, and even though they didn't get asked more than once, every single question was written down and answered by the city, if not at that meeting, subsequently. All the people want to do is contribute and get involved in this and make sure that they're heard and that they understand what's going on. I don't see what the big problem is on this thing. And I think you're right, that Mayor Clark is going to find that this is not quite what he's hoping on if people start calling in and wanting time when there is a major issue out there.
And as I try to not put words in people's mouths, Randy, I'd appreciate it if you didn't do that with me.
Okay, I'm, I'm just saying, that's my, that's my opinion, okay? That you're going to find it less than what you care for. And all I'm saying is, is that I don't see what the big deal is with five minutes. It's not a big amount. It's one page of paper, guys. I know when I come down, I very often will write my stuff down and hand it out, because just so I stay with inside the three minutes and what I actually say. All I'm saying is, five minutes is not a big deal, and it's because people want to participate. What a terrible thing to have happen.
Thanks, Randy. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I want to say this directly to you, to you. There are some people that are sitting by you that are making this personal, and it shouldn't be. What is five minutes? That's not very long. And most of what you have, you've heard these people say is true. People want to get involved in the government. They really want to know what's going on. And personally for myself, I don't come down here often, and when I do, I just want to make sure that whatever I say makes sense enough to all of you that are sitting there. This is ridiculous, that we should be discussing three minutes to five minutes.
We're kind of not anymore. Actually, that failed, but go ahead. Please don't stop.
Yeah, but, but the bottom line, it shouldn't have never come up in the first place. The other thing is, why are you being put in the middle of it? It doesn't make sense to me. Somebody said, "Government by the people for the people of the people." Those are the people. I'm one of the people, and we have votes. This is ridiculous. It really, it really is ridiculous.
Thank you, everyone.
Ridiculous.
Thank you, sir. All right, there is a motion on the floor, and there is a second, and we're going to go ahead and take a vote on the amendment made by Mr. Morsi. Josh, you're really pushing this.
Well, as the rules currently state right now, a person can speak up to three minutes per agenda item, and since Mr. Morsi has made a new motion, this is a separate agenda item. I'm just reading the rules. I have three minutes, and I'll start them now. First of all, I don't like hearing that these have been the rules since 1993, because really, it's 2014, and a few years ago, there wasn't a national healthcare system, but now there is. So things change, whether it's you like it or not. It's healthy to have these discussions, and so I would just ask respectfully, please stop looking to the past, because that's probably partially why some of you are up there. You were elected to a new city council for new ideas. Also, just a point of clarification, again, there are things that come up at meetings that you don't know about ahead of time. So I guess I would ask, can I call down to the city every week and say, "Mr. Mayor, I'm going to want to talk for five minutes"? Just every week, and then be authorized to have my five minutes? I mean, because that's kind of where I'm positioned to be at. I might not even ever get up and speak for five minutes, but just so I'm safe, and I know that if I, something is said that I want to speak to, I mean, with that, is that, is that what you're saying? Is that I could just call down every week and say, "Susie, I would like to speak for five minutes at the council meeting"?
If the motion passed. The way I understood it...
If the motion passed, yeah.
So just for clarification, because I did write this motion, was that it was on a specific item, that, that you need to call and, and say whatever your presentation's going to be on, whatever topic, so you would need to know your topic, I guess. Correct me if I'm wrong. I...
But he still could make comments at the meeting.
He still, but he still could make comments at the meeting.
Yeah, my, my item may not be on the agenda.
It's for oral presentation.
Oh, yeah.
Right, but they need to tell what they're-
Either agenda or for oral presentation.
Right, but they need to tell what topic they're going to talk about at oral presentations, or they just say, "I just want to talk"?
No.
Oh, okay. Then I-
And then I've got like 30, 30 seconds, so I've, I've got like 30 seconds here, so I just want to say, one of my biggest other issues is back again to transparency. I read the Courier religiously. One week I read it, and it says that the majority of council, or, Mr. Mayor, that you've heard from a majority of councilors, several councilmembers, that they don't want to have this discussion, and I'm not putting words in your mouth, I'm just reading what they put in the paper. And then the very next, like, a few days later, you were shell-shocked at an agenda meeting, you even admitted it. So, those are the type of conversations that aren't happening at the council meetings that I think we want to hear. Like, nobody, when you said that, when you said, "I heard from several councilmembers," not a single councilmember spoke up and said, "Yes, I have this concern." In fact, you unanimously approved it at the very next meeting, after there was a little bit of a contentious thing to not put it on the agenda, then, like, four days later. So, it's just difficult for me to know. I would just prefer to have everything happen right here, in this room, every Monday night. Like Councilman Schmidt said, until this conversation started, we were going to be out of here within less than an hour of your meeting. Again, I would say, I had no intention to get up and speak tonight. It just happened when I was here. So, I just want to make those comments, but mainly, it's 2014, so I don't care what Al Manning did. I wasn't even born, I don't think, when Al Manning was mayor. So, I, I really don't care what he says, and I think, Councilman Morrissey, new government, be a new councilmember and do something new.
Okay. I'm, I'm going to just add my comments to Mr. Morrissey's motion. I, I appreciate the intent of that. However, from, from my standpoint, I also thought that the motion was to speak on a specific item. Again, as I use the example of the gentleman that here, that's here to talk about the housing addition. So, it would not be my wish that council would pass, but it's, it's your vote, and the motion was made as it was, because what would happen, I, I believe, is just exactly as the last gentleman just, just said. We would have a, a list of a, a lot of people that would call up every Monday and say, "I want to talk for five minutes," and they'd get on the list, just to be on the list with no intention, or, excuse me, with no subject in mind at all at the time. So, with that being the motion, I, I would, I would hope that that doesn't pass. I have no problem at all with folks calling up and, and requesting to speak to the council and them receiving five minutes if they have a topic and a subject that they want to discuss with the council. But that's not the motion that's on the table.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Morrissey.
Just to clarify, I'm, even in the resolution which was passed in 2009, there's a statement at number seven, "Citizens are encouraged to register at the clerk's office by 5:00 p.m. on Monday, the day of the city council meeting. To appear before the city council, registered speakers will be given first priority." It doesn't speak that they have to have a specific item addressed. And also, back in 1993, as precedent, there is the statement under six B regarding oral presentations, that speakers may register with the clerk auditor's office by 5:00 p.m. on Monday of the day of the city council meeting to appear before the city council. And it doesn't say that they are required to, it's when they call in to say a specific item.
And I understand that, and I understand your motion. I, I misunderstood it, but I don't now. I do understand it. So, let's, let's, let's have a vote on this. Is there, are, are we clear what we're voting on?
Could I ask for a restating of the motion? I'm sorry, I think we've-
You, you may.
-talked enough about this. I'd like to make sure I understand it exactly.
Mr. Morrissey, so that, again, would you restate your motion, please?
Susie, do you want me to?
Okay, let's let Susie read it back. How about that?
Here's what I have. Tell me if I am incorrect. Resolution to approve amending general rules for public participation at city council meetings for speaking from a maximum of three minutes to a maximum of five minutes or longer if approved by the mayor when the individual preregisters by 4:00 p.m. on the Monday of the meeting, and if not, the three-minute rule remains.
Correct.
Very good. Madam Clerk, please. It's a roll call vote.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Wilper?
No.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
No.
Mr. Jones?
No.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. Lind?
No.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, that motion failed also. So, where we are is exactly where we've been since 1993 that we can trace it back to. We, we have a, what, what is it? Well, it was 1993 and amended in 2009, but the, the time limit for oral presentations will remain at three minutes. I will still be the presider of the meeting, and I will control that. And I will control it as I have for the first three and a half years that I was mayor. I will not use the time clock. I will remind people when it gets to be three minutes, and we'll, we'll see where that goes from there. That worked very well, I think, other than a very, just a couple of isolated incidences, that worked very well. And that's what we're going to do. It's the vote and the wish of the council, so-
It's also three minutes for people have comments on a particular agenda item too as well, right?
I'm a little more lax on that, Quentin, but yes, it, it technically is three minutes, but that's a very specific, I mean, and, and again, I keep going back to the gentleman here, but it's a very good example of, of why people might have a specific topic that they want to discuss, and I will probably be more, give more leeway to somebody that has comments on a specific item than I do just in general comments. Mr. Mayor? Yes, Mr. Schmidt?
If I could just mention for the public good, I would be very interested in supporting a motion similar to what Mr. Morrissey made, but taking the prerogative, if we don't like the word whim, out on the mayor's presiding, or deciding who can speak longer than five minutes. I mean, anything we could do to increase the three minutes to five minutes, I think would be a good thing. If in order to get that, we have to play what I think is kind of a silly game of calling down to the office before 4:00 o'clock, which I, again, I don't see what that accomplishes, I don't see what that proves, I don't see what that gains. But if that would be the only addition to it, and we could move from three minutes to five minutes and, and leave the part out that I think you kind of wanted to leave out as far as putting you in that spot of allowing people to go over five minutes, because I also think we do have the rule right now that if it is a, a very technical or difficult or, or whatever issue, multiple people can get up and take different pieces of the conversation. We could still do that, so you could have five people get up and speak for five minutes piece or whatever. So, I mean, I think that would handle that rather than one person talking for 20 minutes. So, I, I would just make that comment, and given the fact I've already made one motion and gotten shot down, Pat's made another, gotten shot down. If somebody else would like to make-
Second.
Mr. Sch-
That motion.
Oh, does not-
If you'd like to make that motion, I'd second it, Quentin.
Yes.
Like to make a motion to do a similar motion.
Susie could probably do this, if you just take out the part about the extra, going beyond five minutes at anybody's discretion, just five minutes, period.
I do like to meet somewhere close, but do, do we allow businesses to speak longer than five minutes? Make presentations about possible developments?
Well, but that, that'd be more like a work session or something, right?
I don't, I don't think that that's going to fall under the classification of an oral presentation, Quentin, particularly if we've invited them here to tell us about their, their plans or, or something, that, that wouldn't fall under that category.
Okay.
Yeah. And actually, it wasn't, Mr. Schmidt, just in response to your statements, it wasn't the fact that I was going to have to make the decision, it was the fact that people would call in, just generally speaking, the, it was the nonspecificity of the comments that I was concerned about. I make tough decisions every day about a lot of things.
Was there a motion on the table?
There is no motion on the table. There was an attempt here, if, if Mr. Hart would like to finish, or if not, we're done.
With or without the specific item, saying why they're calling, or why they want to speak, or what they're speaking about, I guess. A specific topic or no specific topic?
This is, this is a problem with us going towards 7:30. It is. I don't want to take away the mayor's ability to govern the meeting, and that's, that's the part that I'm, that's the part that he's put in place for us, regardless of people like it or not, to bring some civility to the meeting, some order to the meeting. So, I don't want to take away that particular piece. But if I'm remembering conversations from earlier, Councilman Schmidt, it is five minutes, and you're done, period.
So, not on a specific topic? They just need to preregister? Just so I know how to type-
Let's, well, let's, are you making the motion, Councilman Hart?
I'm trying to think through this.
Okay. Let's, let's not write anything down till we have a motion on the table and a second, please.
Could we have Susie reread that motion again?
Resolution to approve amending general rules for public participation at city council meetings for speaking from a maximum of three minutes to a maximum of five minutes or longer if approved by the mayor-
So, if you took out that part right there, so the maximum of five minutes?
When the individual preregisters by 4:00 p.m. on the Monday of the meeting, and if not, the three-minute rule remains.
So, I would, I would make that motion and take out that one part of, right where you stop at five minutes, and end it, "Mayor." Could you read that for me then?
Resolution to approve amending general rules for public participation at city council meetings for speaking from a maximum of three minutes to a maximum of five minutes or longer when the individual preregisters by 4:00 p.m.
Okay, but I think, I would prefer to take out the "or" longer. I want, I want it to stop at five minutes.
Five minutes.
That would be my motion.
If they preregister. When the individual preregisters by 4:00 p.m. on the Monday of the meeting, if not, the three-minute rule remains.
Mr. Mayor, that's an excellent compromise, that, Steve's.
I don't see any compromise at all, quite honestly.
It's almost the same thing that was proposed, that you voted no against. But, but we're going from three to five.
You're going to, if you preregister.
Which is what, I, I was proposing all along, but then you, whoever you are, are getting the preregistration. To me, that's the compromise.
I, I think that's what Mr. Morrissey's motion just was, that failed. So, we're just taking out a word or two?
Oh, was it?
Well, Mr. Morrissey had in "or longer if the mayor approves."
"Or longer and if approved by the mayor." That's what mine included.
So, it's taking out the "or" longer, but it's still not putting in that there's a specific topic. It is just that if they preregister, they get five minutes. If they don't preregister, they get three minutes regardless what the topic is or if they know what the topic is.
It seems to be.
Second.
Perfect. I second it.
So, that-
That's my motion.
You're making the motion.
That's my second.
Okay. Does there need to be any clarification on that motion from anybody? Here, there's a motion and a second. Mr. Schmidt with a second, and Mr. Lind. Madam Clerk, please.
Where was I? Mr. Wilper?
No.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
No.
Mr. Jones?
No.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. So, now, if anybody calls in before 4:00 o'clock on Monday, give us your name and your address. You can speak for as long as you want to, up to, I'm sorry, you can speak up to five minutes on any subject you want to. You can speak on any subjects you want to, up to five minutes. There we go.
And, Mr. Mayor, that is during oral presentations.
It's during oral presentations.
It's also, that's also to an issue of- Item two and item, that's item three and item five.
Nothing says on-
Mr. Mayor, my, my point was during oral presentation, they can speak to any item if it's on an agenda, public speaker, and then it's just on that item. It's not on any other item.
Sure. Sure, yeah, but it's five minutes when they call.
Yeah, and it's, and it's on two and four or whatever.
Right, two and four, and then-
On, on the oral presentations.
That's what they're talking for, so-
Now, Mr. Mayor-
They can talk on anything for five minutes.
Will the five-minute people sit on that side and the three-minute people sit over here?
I, I just, I suggested at one point that we start taking role of the folks that are out there, see, see who's here.
Same ones every week.
Ladies and gentlemen, that's the end of our regularly scheduled meeting. It is time for oral presentations. Mr. Levon, you're up.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just a point of clarification. Is that, is that in effect now?
No.
Three minutes.
Yes, sir.
I, I go to say, and, and, and probably I should talk to the zoning and development engineer first.
Okay.
But I'm going to tell you to vote against this, because I don't want 148 units being sent through my neighborhood, because I'm in a neighborhood where there's already ample housing and quite a few people, and there's a shortcut from Hy-Vee, Walmart, to Tama County, Hardin County, and Dyzerden, Trayer, and on down, that comes through South Town and Sarah Drive. And, and then if you add 148 housing units beyond that circle, and then send those people through there, it's going to be terrible. So, before they start breaking ground and building those houses, they ought to have access past BioLife or another one from, I don't know, further south, I mean, east of there. That's all.
Okay. Thank you for your comments, and it's, it's an issue we are addressing. I can assure you.
Randy here at 111 Highland. This will be brief. And using the website, like, a couple thoughts came to mind, that maybe it might help if on the website, they were able to put maps that showed what the zones are, like they use for sidewalks, because I hear of Zone Four, and I have no idea what Zone Four is. And the city wards, put those on there too. Then people can visualize this stuff. Okay, that's those. Now, you'll notice I'm putting on my, my veteran cap from my Voyager 8240 and 8, because this is going to be a favorite of you folks. I, and I got this idea from watching our city attorney as he came out and, and spoke for his event downtown with the shootings and that kind of thing, of going after the old-time crooks and things. Voyager 82 is a veterans' group. We, I'm not going to go into the whole thing, but we're the caretakers of the veteran boxcar, and that's for all veterans in the state of Iowa. We keep this out at Antique Acres. And by the way, if you ever want to get into it, there is a special relationships between Waterloo and the, this particular's veterans groups and the boxcar. And the first of August, we're going to hold a new event out there. And we've never done this before, and it hasn't been done in the area in a long time. The first, second, and third of August, we're going to hold a Veterans Bluegrass Festival out there. We've got four bands coming, and you can pass this off to anybody out there that wants it. You're all invited to come. It's a family event. You don't need a liquor license for it, because we're not going to sell liquor, there's no booze. It's, you can bring your dog if you want to do that, that's perfectly okay. But think about it. Come on out there, and you'll have a little fun. There'll be four different times that we have the bands playing. Once Friday night, twice on Saturday, and then Sunday will be old-time gospel, bluegrass, and we have a wonderful, wonderful, long-bearded preacher who's going to come and talk to you all and save your souls. So, that's for you guys.
Thanks, Randy. And that'll be a great time.
Dog Bite 526 on Park Boulevard. I just want to tell you, thank you. I, I appreciate what went on here tonight. I'm not talking about the outcome. I'm talking about just the fact that the dialogue you had, the exchange you had amongst one another. To me, that's what government's all about. And, and I, I just want to tell you that I, I feel good about what happened here tonight. I, I applaud you for talking to one another and exchanging your opinions with one another. And I think that's what these city council meetings all are, are all about. And again, I just want to tell you, I appreciate what you've done tonight, and I appreciate And again, I just want to tell you, I appreciate what you've done tonight, and I appreciate you conducting that kind of a meeting. I also would like to add one other thing. Mr. Clark, do you have anything to tell us about a dog bite?
I'm sorry?
Do you have anything to tell us about a dog bite?
No.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Forrest Dill, 1725 Huntington Road. I've never used my three minutes, and I don't plan on needing five. I do have a concern about some money that I feel was not spent appropriately here in Waterloo. Downing Avenue was in the sidewalk program last year. The city went out and they did intersections, put in the handicap walks. They spent a lot of money on Downing Avenue. They had citizens spend money on Downing Avenue repairing their own sidewalks. This year, we are doing a recon on one end of Downing Avenue. Most of those intersections were done, are tore up. Mid-America came in to put in new gas lines, and most all of those are tore up because the gas lines obviously were under there. So that money could have been saved with a little pre-planning, checking with Mid-America, and knowing that this was going to be a recon job, it should have been withdrawn from the sidewalk program and put back on after Downing was recon. Just take better care of my money. I don't have enough the way it is. Thank you.
Thanks, Forrest.
David Dryer, 3145 West Forest Street. I noticed on item 16, there was no request for public comments, so I didn't try to get up and comment at that time. But I see we're going to do another $400,000 for bike trails. And I'm wondering what's going on with, excuse me, I guess I got a frog, with University Avenue. That's busting up a lot of my shocks and my car, and many things like that. We seem to be able to spend money on bike trails. I go past a bike trail, and there's a crew out there busting out a piece and patching it back in, or doing whatever different things on a lot of bike trails. And we need roads. So why do we seem to have $400,000 for a bike trail, when we don't have enough money to fix University Avenue, or Forest Street by where I live? You go on out, that's getting busted up bad. Just doesn't quite make sense to me. One other comment is that I see mics in front of all of the rest of the people, and the mayor's got a collar mic. Is that part of the new plans, that we can then hear everybody better? Because we can hear the mayor very well. But if you guys don't sit up to the mic, Mr. Morrisey does a good job of that, we can't hear you. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. I will make one quick update. Dave mentioned University Avenue, just so that it's probably appropriate that I do. We did have a meeting last week with the engineers, with our engineers who's designing that. We do now think that we have a number that we're ready to go to the DOT with. We're hoping that we, being Waterloo, can start our negotiations with the DOT, if not by the end of June, first part of July, I hope, certainly by mid-July, to start that process. So we're getting a lot closer, and we should have something concrete with University Avenue, hopefully by mid-July on that. So further comments from council?
Motion to receive and file oral comments adjourned. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or adjourned?